Ready to go? Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting for Monday, April 8th. Thank you for being here. We'll all rise, please, as we stand in the Pledge of the Leader.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Good evening. We're going to start this evening with public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to start us off? Yes, we'll start.
(Inaudible) address the Board of Selectmen. I had to see my senator and my representative here because I think most of my remarks...
Just, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Kalashnikov. One moment, she's having a little technical difficulty. We want to make sure we hear every word you say.
Mary, your party had their day in the sun today.
I don't know, I was working here, so I don't know what was going on out there.
Glad you were working here.
If there was a party, I wasn't invited.
I don't think you missed much, frankly, my opinion. Well, you should have been a doctor, Sean.
No, I don't think so. There's nothing you can't do.
Should have been a doctor, Sean.
Club scout, boy scout. Thank you. We apologize. Mr. Kalashnikov.
Thank you, madam, for selecting. My remarks this evening will be probably encompassing Public Act 1060, an act concerning gun violence prevention and children's safety, which title is totally misleading. And anyone will tell you that this act that they passed is not going to prevent one killing. In fact, since the act's been passed, I think we've had two shootings in Hartford and I think two shootings in New Haven. And now that it's summertime, I suspect that it will be open season in the big cities. Now, the thing that troubles me is that I've been conversing with various representative people from Simsbury regarding their representative who they voted for, and they tell me to a man and a woman that they were assured by the representative from Simsbury that he would vote no regarding this bill. And they're very, very upset to think that he would lie to them. And I don't want to make a joke of it, but I have a senator, Blumenthal, that has a bad habit of telling fibs, told everybody he served in Vietnam, never served a day. I have another junior senator, federal senator, and he told everybody about it, he told everybody that the mortgage that he had was a fallacy. And to this day, he hasn't told us how he acquired the mortgage. And these are people that are representing us. And I had the privilege of talking with Senator Sessions, the senator from South Carolina, and he assures me that this bill is going nowhere in the Senate. So here again, we have a lot of people that have been elected by the people, misleading the people, telling the people, lying to the people, that change is in the wind, and it's not. And the thing that troubles me, I don't have any blood on my hands. I didn't have one thing to do with what occurred in Newtown. But if I speak to certain people, I'm accused of being against children, the farthest thing from the point. And this is what, this is where we are, under the Democratic leadership, neighbor against neighbor, state against state. You can't get a straight answer in the State House. Nobody knows what this bill is all about. And if you say to somebody, "Well, I'm for the Constitution, Second Amendment." Oh, this doesn't have anything to do with the Second Amendment. Well, if it doesn't, why are people telling us that they're going to take it to court? If it doesn't have anything to do with it, why did our forefathers bother to put it into the state's constitution under Article 1, Section 15? And they put it in this way. They didn't say you had the right to join the militia. They didn't say anything. They said you had a right to own a gun to defend yourself. Own a gun to defend yourself, and that's exactly what it means. It doesn't mean you have to go down and get permission for somebody to let you have a gun. And the last thing that troubles me, that from what I see coming out of that State House, we're leaning towards a police state. And the first step, and they could say, "Oh, no, no, no." The first step, why is it, if you own a certain gun or a certain magazine, and I don't have a dog in the fight, why is it that you have to go on a list? There's going to be a list. And if anything happens, the police are going to take this list, and they're going to go to each and every one on that list without a warrant, and you call it, I know about, all about John Doe warrants, but without a warrant, knock on your door, and if you don't say the right thing to them, you'll be arrested. And I conclude with that.
Thank you, Mr. Kalashnikov.
You know, you have to start standing up, or you're not going to have any rights.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
(Inaudible) 26 Wickham Drive. At the last Board of Select meeting, I was surprised that Deputy Selectman Lisa Rahedan needed an opinion from the town attorney to interpret for 411 clearly stated in the town charter pertaining to the prohibition of selecting giving orders to any administrative officer. Only the first selectman can give directions to staff. February 27, 2013, I filed an FOI complaint asking for all emails and other materials sent to and from Lisa Rahedan to certain administrative officers of the town, and to date, I have not received the information. If I don't receive these files, I will have to file a complaint with the FOI Commission. I would like you to direct your attention to those maps that I have on the wall over there. At the last first selectman, at the last meeting, First Selectman Mary Glassman stated it might be a good idea to open the town-owned Baker property near the Farmington River for trails. It appears that most of the land abutting the Farmington River from Route 44 on Nod Road to 315 Bridge in Terriffill are designated hunting areas owned by the state. There are 315 acres in Terriffill Triangle abutting Pharaoh's Farm, 137 acres abutting the bike trail at Tower Park, and 50 acres at Route 185 Bridge. I took pictures of the signs that are posted near the trails. Would the Baker property be in close proximity to the state hunting area? Is hunting land compatible with bike and walking trails? Since there is hunting all year round, do these trails place the public in danger? Recently, there was an article by John Lender questioning the need to exempt a weapon offender registry from becoming public. I would like to know why gun permits are exempt from the public. Years ago, these permits were available to the public, and then the law changed. I was told that they exempted the gun permits from the public because criminals would know where guns were available. Now that there is a proliferation of gun permits, maybe there are more gun permits than bad guys. It is time to once again allow the public to access gun permits. The law must be changed to protect the innocent. If parents in Newtown could access the gun permit files, maybe they would have avoided the massacre. The public has a right to know. I am very concerned that the taxpayers continually ask to pay millions of dollars for studies for rats and designs that are never implemented. The town has continually hired consultants to review the town organization, and all studies stated that Simsbury should have a town manager former government. First Selectman Mary Glassman ran on the platform of having a town manager for Simsbury, and since she has been elected, she forgot her promise to her constituents. We not only don't have professional management, we have a first selectman with a six-figure salary delegating all of her responsibilities to its pseudo-town manager as stated in the approved charter revision, Chapter 5, Section 502, duties. Once again, First Selectman Mary Glassman is spending taxpayer money on issues that are out of her control. The taxpayers funded a whim of a purchase of the Simsbury airport that would lose over $200,000 a year, and the owners were not interested in selling. Now Glassman has appropriated over $30,000 to study what to do with the Hartford building when it becomes vacant. First Selectman Mary Glassman has no control on the decision of the shareholders and the president of the Hartford. Although the Hartford is one of the highest taxpayers, the town has no control of the Hartford bottom line. The Hartford building will probably be demolished, and they will take over $46 million off their balance sheet and $1.7 million in taxes, as did Ethna and Pfizer. The taxpayers should not support another whim of political capital. I would suggest that the board treat the $96,000 boom moa as a CNR expenditure and ask that Mr. Toner pay back to the taxpayers that amount as other CNR projects are funded. I have reviewed the annual report of Squadron Line School and found many issues that need immediate consideration from the teachers. There are concerns about using old technology that is so old it does not work, bathrooms that are in such poor physical condition, and smell. Students refuse to use them. Drop off and pickup are dangerous. Lack of communication between staff and administration. Curriculum is too rigid. Books are outdated. Concerns about lack of power professionals. Heating and cooling in school is an issue. Too much paperwork. Need for mentoring for teachers. Support for initiatives lacking. Student support deficient, school dirty, and students' support is deficient. School dirty and unhealthy. There's work overload. These concerns seem to be prevalent in all the schools. Now that there is a new superintendent and a new principal at Squadron Line, improvement should be made. Tuesday, April 9th, is a budget hearing at the high school. The budgets presented are inconsistent with the Economic Times. There is a reduction in the collection rate of $360,907,557. Assessments are reduced, on average, 13.88 percent. The Simsbury fund is deficient by $96,374, and the town continually adds money from the taxpayers to make the supposedly self-sufficient fund whole. Why has the town continually placed $50,000 in the town budget for Main Street Partnership, a nonprofit organization? Although they do an important job, they should be subsidized by the Chamber of Commerce, not the taxpayers. The actuarial assumptions for funding pension funds are over-exuberant. The town had assumed 7.45 percent return on investment, but changed the figure to 7 percent, still too high. It also assumes a projected salary increase by 4 percent. This is not attainable in the economic climate, leaving our pension funds deficient. Investments are down. Revenues are down. Property values are down. There are over 700 residents unemployed in Simsbury out of January. And that doesn't include college students who can't find jobs and those either no longer looking for employment or underemployed. Foreclosures are up. The banks pay the taxes on the foreclosed houses, but empty houses cannot spend money, leaving our businesses with fewer customers and neighborhoods blighted. Any increase in the budget is unacceptable, and I will vote no as presented. I recently jogged past Bondor Hills and saw cut wires on an electrical box that was open, as these pictures show. It appears that these wires might be live, and someone should be alerted to check out these wires. Thank you for listening, and I'll post all my comments on Simsbury.com and a brand-new Simsbury patch that still needs some work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Donald Reeger, 9 Stodmore Road. I'd just like to say a brief word on behalf of the Farmington River, if I may. Many of us in town are still quite worried about the possible impact on the river if the MDC succeeds in convincing UConn that the best way to deal with that institution's perceived water needs is to export Farmington River water to UConn and Mansfield and other potential customers in eastern Connecticut. The river's in trouble. It's under stress. There has been an impact of climate change on the river, and we can't know what future climate change portends for the river. We do know that diverting water from the river today is a dangerous idea from an environmental point of view. You folks have been very good about the river. I hope you'll continue to be vigilant about it and stay focused on this issue. Our Conservation Commission wrote to the MDC more than a month ago suggesting that they follow their charter and actually release some of the extra water they say they have in the Barkhamsted Reservoir into the river through the dry summer season, thus addressing the low-flow conditions that our townspeople have been complaining about for a long time. The MDC has not been motivated to respond to that letter, nor are they generally motivated to address concerns of folks in the valley. For reasons that probably seemed good at the time, when the legislature chartered the MDC, they didn't provide for any representation for the Valley towns on the board of the MDC. And so where we stand today is they don't care about us. Their mercantile interest in the water doesn't line up well with our environmental interest in the river. So I hope you stay focused on this, and I note our legislators are with us this evening. I urge you to engage with them because it's in the legislature, very likely, that is our only salvation on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you for all your hard work on this issue. We appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move now to our guests. I want to welcome Senator Whitkows and Representative Hampton. This is an important time of the year because, as you continue your work, we are anxious to hear about impacts on our town, and so we appreciate your being here and give us an update. So if you'd like to...
Do you expect us to bring bags of money home?
Yes, that would have been nice. Well, we just don't want you leaving with our money. Let's put it that way.
Well, we're delighted to be here, and I really want to thank you for the invitation. It's great to be back in this chamber and great to be here with Senator Whitkows, who's been very supportive of this freshman. He hazed me a couple times, but seriously, he's been very supportive in my 90 days, just 90 days of being in the legislature. Some days it feels longer, but it's been an incredible experience, and I'm really privileged and honored to serve with Kevin and all the other legislators to represent Simsbury at the state capitol. And who knew before December 14th, all the events that would happen and transpire? We were already going into a difficult session with a difficult state budget, national climate, and we were certainly prepared for that. And actually, that issue has taken a somewhat backseat. We're going to talk more about that this evening. But it's foremost in our minds, the state budget, and we are not in great straits. And the governor did propose a budget that I have concerns about, and I know Kevin does, that it's a significant increase in a budget, and it's not very friendly to municipalities. And we're quite concerned about the budget, and I'll let Kevin talk more about that. I proposed initially several bills, co-signed a couple with Kevin, one of which is the water bill. I, as a freshman, a little titmouse of a freshman, came in and decided to take on MDC and UConn and say, "I think it's abhorrent," and Kevin co-signed the bill that UConn would have the ability to come and take water from our area to reroute it through pipes up to Mansfield to use for their expansion. I have no problem, sure Kevin has no problem with UConn's growth, but we found it reprehensible that there is no study of economic impact, no real study of environmental impact, and the fact that the state does not have a water plan. So we put in a bill that would put a moratorium on water diversions until we do have a state plan. That bill died. And, but we, as Kevin knows, the fight is not over. We continue to work with the town. We continue to work with advocates like the Farmington River Watershed and other environmental groups to fight this issue. It's important that all our residents reach out and that this board has reached out to talk about its opposition to water diversion. I've researched other states that have state water plans, and I'm ready to do the work to make sure that Connecticut has a comprehensive state plan before we do some of these stopgap measures, such as borrowing water from another source. So, Don, you're on notice. We have not given up, and I really thank you for your advocacy. Another bill I submitted, and Kevin was supportive, was the, and this is something Linda Schofield started after the last great storms that we had and the power outages. McLean Home and other nursing facilities were willing to take elderly and vulnerable, but because of some of the bureaucracy and paperwork, they were unable to do so. So our proposal would take away some of the obstructions to creating McLean and other facilities as a temporary shelter. That died in committee, but it has life possibly in some other committees, working with public health and other entities, to make sure that Simsbury, and it would not be mandatory, it would be voluntary, that if a healthcare facility would like to take folks during a storm, they could. Kevin had the idea. He met with some veterans of naming a bridge over the Farmington River, the Bataan Corridor Memorial Bridge, and I don't know what the status of that is. I'll let you talk about that. We both also put in legislation concerning violations of handicap parking laws because there's more and more abuse in Simsbury and elsewhere on handicap parking. Of course, the largest issue to date is the Sandy Hook legislation that was proposed and passed last week in a great bipartisan effort, and I thank all the leaders and all the people that have reached out to me on both sides of this complicated issue. And I am not an enthusiast or a gun expert by any means, but I certainly have dug into the issue, have met with gun owners, have gone to the state police and taken Guns 101 and went to Medicon, and met with some very great people who were very helpful to me in educating me on the issue. And I also met with law enforcement officials, victims of Sandy Hook, and other victims of gun violence. And the legislation was passed, SB 160. We have some handouts we'll give you. It summarizes the bill, but it significantly expands the assault weapon ban, requires universal background checks, establishes a first-in-the-nation national registry, Dangerous Weapon Offender Registry, also creates more programs in mental health area, which I feel we still need more to do. It does offer mental health first aid training. It establishes the program to help mental health professionals in schools and working with pediatricians. The bill also goes a long way to work on school security, and it actually requires that schools develop a safety plan across the state for school security. This is only the first step. This bill is certainly not going to solve all of our problems, but it's pretty comprehensive and probably a model for the nation. And so I just wanted to give an overview on that, and I'll turn it over to Kevin, who can talk about our budget.
Sure. So thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, John. I just wanted to mention, actually, you had a great segue into the fact that although many bills may have died in committee, they're never really dead until June 5th at the stroke of midnight or the last day of session. They always have a chance of reviving themselves somewhere along the line through amendments, et cetera. And, Don, I thought you gave some great testimony up in UConn that night, and Mary was there, representing the town of Simsbury, and Lisa, and all the Valley towns are on board with that. Having some private conversations, I don't honestly believe it's going to go anywhere. The fourth proposal, as you know, or may not be aware, there were four proposals to get water up to UConn and Mansfield for economic development, one of those being the MDC proposal. My private conversations with folks are that it's probably not going to happen, but we will definitely be staying on top of that to make sure it doesn't, at least because I believe it's a detriment to us. And I will briefly speak about December 14th because, to date, the legislature has been bogged down with nothing but Newtown. Basically, all the committees have stopped. If you weren't aware of what's happening, and I find it hard to believe because there's been so much publicity about it, the governor had formed a commission to look at ways we can prevent gun violence in the state of Connecticut. Not to be outdone, the legislative leaders said, "Well, since you didn't put any legislators on your committee, we're going to form our own, and we're going to form a mega task force." And there were 60 members on this task force. It was pure bipartisan, same number of Republicans as Democrats, and they broke that task force up into three different working groups: school safety, gun violence, and mental health. And each of the different committees came together. The working groups had public hearings, but they were on just proposals. There wasn't a specific bill. So that somewhat got the angst of a lot of folks up that they didn't know what we were doing, just it was all speculative. And then there was a public hearing down in Newtown, basically, which, if you were down there, it lasted till 11 o'clock at night, and it was pretty much just the residents of Newtown that had the opportunity to speak because there was a cutoff date. Both John and I serve on the Public Safety Committee, and there was a really good give and take from people that came up and spoke to us about a gun bill, Senate Bill 1076, which was what we call an aircraft carrier, had tons of different things in there. And, and I didn't stay that long. But it was the opportunity for legislators to ask tough questions on both sides, either pro and con, on gun issues. And I didn't feel I had enough information from my constituents, because you really got three minutes to talk. So I had my own gun hearing in Canton a couple weeks ago and made sure I had a table set up so I could look somebody in the eye, and they could look me in the eye, and we could have an honest discussion about what was being proposed by the legislature. And it ended up coming down to, we reached a consensus on the mental health issues, a consensus on the school safety issues, and there was not consensus on the gun violence issues. It ended up being the Republicans had submitted their proposals that they felt were consensus items, and then the Democrats issued their proposal that they felt would be consensus items. And believe it or not, if you compare the two consensus item lists, all but two items were consensus items on the Republicans and Democrats issues. And that came down to the expansion of the assault weapon ban and high-capacity magazines. High-capacity magazines is a magazine, which is what goes inside the gun, holds the bullets, and for those of you who are not aware of the terminology, that holds more than 10 rounds, more than 10 bullets. And so the hopes were that there would be a public hearing, at least invite a guest or some modified type of public hearing. They reached a decision on Monday, an agreement, the leaders did, the six leaders, and then we had, and we're in session on Wednesday. So there wasn't an opportunity, they felt, to have a public hearing on the issue. I had the opportunity to read the bill. I did read it. And I also did some homework on what I felt was my determinant factor on why I voted against the bill, and that was the Heller versus D.C. case. And, you know, a lot of people came up to me prior to the vote and said, "Where are you on the Second Amendment?" And I said, "What do you mean, where am I on the Second Amendment?" They'd pull out their little handy Constitution book, and they'd flip to the page, and they'd read verbatim something that was written in 1791. And I said, "Hold on. Don't read to me what was written in 1791. Read to me what the United States Supreme Court decided in 2008." And what the Supreme Court decided in 2008 was that the government has the right to say who can own guns, where they can carry them, and what type of guns they can carry. And what they've decided was the government can prohibit felons and mentally ill folks from carrying guns. They can create gun-free zones, as they have, in schools and municipal buildings. And they also said you can prohibit the type of guns to be carried, limited to only those not in common use at the time. So my research showed to me that there's about 2 million guns in Connecticut and about 154,000 AR-15s. That's one of the weapons that was used by Al-Anza. So I said on the Senate floor, "Well, that's about 5 percent. 5 percent could be arguable whether that is in common use." But the high-capacity magazines have been around pre-ban, the federal ban, and post-ban for a number of years, and I believed that restricting the ability to carry a 10-round magazine is a violation of the Constitution. And I believe, once we start going down that road of whittling away a constitutional right, it becomes a slippery slope, and that's why I couldn't support the bill. But moving on now, past gun violence, now we're back into the throes of a budget. And February 6th, the governor... The governor proposed his budget book on February 6th, and there's parts in there that are good.
Thank you.
It's the good, the bad, and the ugly contained in the budget book. What part that seems to get the most conversation piece is the car tax proposal, the motor vehicle car tax proposal. And Governor Malloy has stated that... And Governor Malloy has stated that he wants to assist the middle class by eliminating the car property tax, because it is a regressive tax. What he proposes is if there's a vehicle, the first $20,000 of value of that vehicle is no longer taxable, and then you would only be taxed at the remaining value. Now, in Simsbury, that hurts. And what happens to the state is, the state actually makes money on that proposal, because you cannot deduct that property tax from your income tax that you file with the state. I haven't met a legislator, nor a First Selectman or mayor, that likes that car tax proposal. So, as we say, in Hartford, it's dead on arrival. No legislator likes it. However, serving on the Finance Committee, I'm hearing rumors now of creating a statewide mill rate, we don't know what that's going to be yet, for all motor vehicles. So, that should be coming out, if it becomes part of the budget, April 23rd, 24th. The folks, the chairman of the Appropriations Committee, that's the spending side of the state, they are two New Haven legislators, and they looked at the spending and some of the minor cuts that the governor was offering, and they said, "This is not the state of Connecticut that we recognize. This budget's going nowhere." Because they were upset about the spending cuts, even though there's a 9.2% increase over the next two years. It's concerning. Folks can say, "Well, we need to continue the services that we provide in the state of Connecticut." But if you look at page, the first page of your handout, see that while the population has only increased 9.4% from 1987, index inflation to our state spending has gone up 318%. So, the state is out of control spending. I mean, I think John and I both agree that we're spending too much money, and I think part of the problem is, the state has to start with zero-based budgeting. It doesn't happen. We always talk about current services versus the actual budget, and it confuses people as to what is a current services budget versus a budget. Current services budget are all the things that have been negotiated through union contracts and things out there. So, it's a built-in increase. That's our current services budget that's carried forward to the next year. We've quit things off, we've borrowed more money. I like to say out in the country, like Simsbury, we love B&amp;Bs. Everybody thinks of bed and breakfast. In Hartford, that's a bad word, because that stands for borrowing and bonding, and that is something that we continuously do, trying to borrow our way out of the problem. Some of the things that affect Simsbury specifically are your ability to manage the money that you receive from the state of Connecticut. While the governor has said that no municipality receives a loss, what's happened is, the monies that you were normally getting from LoCIP money, Pequot money, pilot money, is directed towards ECS. And it used to be in a capital budget where you could use the money as you saw fit. Now, it's directed towards your educational system. And in the first year of the budget, that's great, but in the second year, it becomes part of your money that you spend on education. So, if you hit the MBR, I mean, it's minimum budget requirements, I don't think Simsbury does, but if you were at some of the towns that were close, which a minimum budget requirement says, you must spend at least the same amount of money this year as you spent last year on education. And in doing so, the governor has, under the guise of regionalization, sounds good, but he, all the money that used to come in for school, public school transportation, you're not getting anymore. No community's getting it. And instead, he's putting it in a $5 million pool and saying, "If you regionalize it with another town, then you get to share in that money. But if you have your own K-12 education, there's almost no way you can regionalize busing with another community." So, it makes it very difficult. The towns that have regional boards of education and share high schools, well, they love it because they're looking at more money for themselves, but the towns that have a K-12 education certainly don't like that. I don't want to go through all the slides. You have them. Be more than happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for being here and updating us. You know, just to start off with the car tax, you know, the car tax, excuse me, the car tax is, as you said, a $6 million loss. To put it in context, the entire town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen budget is $18 million. So, just that one bill alone, if it passed, would reduce our revenues by a third of what our budgets are. So, I just, you know, that's a real concern for all of us, particularly the timeframe by which we pass our budgets. We have our public hearing tomorrow night. We'll be sending budgets to public hearing and referendum in May. Legislature, as you said, doesn't adjourn until June. So, again, you know, the timeframe, if Simsbury were to receive a significant loss at that late hour, would have a devastating effect on our municipal services. So, we just want to, I know you know, and we appreciate your communication, but we just want to, again, as you go up to the Capitol and negotiate, if you could bring back that message, that we would just have to start really shutting services down. There's no way you could reduce our budgets. Compared to the state, you know, while the state has had their bond rating downgraded and their expenditures have gone up, our budget has actually gone down over the last five years. So, we've had significant reductions and cutbacks, and we've implemented new programs. So, it's incumbent upon the state to figure out ways to not pass along the problem to municipalities. So, just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, we appreciate that. As Kevin said, which was huge and very important, did delay a lot of our budget, a lot of other issues too, for that matter. So, we'll be addressing those. I know, Mayor, you and I have been appointed to the Moore Commission, which explores more efficiencies and cost-saving measures through regionalization. So, we're always looking for ways to save money through those efforts, and it's great to have you on that initiative. We also stand available to help with the Hartford. You know, we're excited about the Shiret that's come up tonight. I've reached out to the governor, and he's committed some resources, which I'll have more information for you on how we can be helpful with that in terms of the Hartford. And, of course, we want to be partners and supporters here at the state Capitol.
Thank you. I'll open up to the board to see if the board has any questions.
I will say, one of the things I just want to add is, sometimes, policy overlaps with politics. And I think the governor has backed himself in a corner to some degree, because he's claimed that he's not going to raise taxes this year. And looking at the projected deficit this year and into the biennium, that's going to be very difficult to do. That's why you're seeing a lot of the new initiatives happening in the state that bring revenue into the state without raising taxes. Sunday liquor sales, red light cameras, extensions of bills of, I'll say, bills laws that had taxes that were supposed to be sunset, which means they're supposed to go away, they're going to be extended, and that's not being classified as a tax increase, it's just an extension. So, those are the things that are happening in Hartford, and I don't think, even if you abolish the sunset on those issues, you're still going to have a balanced budget. Because there's not, we're so, we have a, I think, two years left of an agreement with the State Employee Bargaining Coalition, the no layoffs for four years. The raises come into effect, I think, this year in the budget. So, it's going to be very, very, very difficult.
I understand. And, you know, it's, as you said, it's, regardless of which party is in power, we've seen the same proposals come back and hurt municipalities. The gas, the car tax is the third time this was proposed, originally by Rowland, then by Jody Rell, and then by Governor Malloy. So, I think, I think you're right, you know, we just want the state to do what we've done here in Simsbury, and is to control our budget and to let us have the revenues that we need to meet the services we need. So, just keep your hands off our money. Tomorrow is Municipality Day at the Capitol, so I hope that you'll be out there advocating for us, and appreciate your communication between now and the end of session. So, if anything does change, we can act quickly to react.
Yeah, I hope you'll have us back.
Yeah, we'd like to come back at the end, do a wrap-up after the session concludes.
Absolutely. I know some folks are in the audience, may have some questions, so if you could stick around afterward, and maybe some folks could speak with you, that'd be great. All right, thanks for being here.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks. Well, next move to our next presentation. I'm going to call on Shannon Nall. Shannon has, this is the third year in a row that Shannon has brought Autism Awareness Day to us, to the town of Simsbury, with Shannon's idea to light Ena Memorial Hall blue as a symbol of our support for children and adults with autism, and to do more locally and statewide to support folks with autism. Shannon herself is a parent of a wonderful son, Jack, who is, her family deals with autism on a daily basis. So, thank you for your strength and your advocacy. And I know you have some friends here tonight who want to help you read the proclamation.
Yes, I think they might be out in the hallway. Yeah, sure. Yes, April is National Autism Awareness Month, and as part of an international campaign to raise awareness about autism, Autism Speaks has taken on an initiative to light various buildings blue. And so, last week, on Monday, to kick off Autism Awareness Month, we did have a nice ceremony at Ena Hall, and I'd like to thank First Selectman for being there, and Lisa and Selectman Askem for being there to support families in town and throughout the Farmington Valley, really, with, across the state, who are living with autism. So, we have some friends here from Focus Center for Autism. They might not have been able to wait this long, but they might come in or not. So, anyway, they are part of our community volunteering and around the community, working in the community, and so it's important that they know that they are supported as well. So, yes. Okay. So, whereas autism is a...
They're coming in.
One moment. Oh, Jessie, come on in.
Yeah, come on up. Sit wherever you want. I want to welcome our friends from Focus.
Thank you.
Come right on up here.
If you're wherever you're comfortable. Wherever you're comfortable.
You want to be over here with me? That's good, too. Come on over here. This is good.
I'd just like to be the center of attention.
Stand right here.
You're in good company.
Come on over, Jessie. Jessie is a panelist on a program called The Focus Spectrum Unplugged. And if you haven't heard this panel, it's really great insight into living with autism. So, Jessie's the man, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're three versions of the windows behind on that screen.
Oh. Absolutely right. Thank you. Okay. Whereas autism is a complex neurobiological disorder that typically lasts throughout a person's lifetime. It is part of a group of disorders known as autism spectrum disorders, ASD. And whereas 1 in 88 children and adults are diagnosed with autism, 1 in 250 girls, 1 in 54 boys is on the autism spectrum, making boys nearly five times more likely than girls to have autism, and a new case is diagnosed almost every 15 minutes. And whereas more children will be diagnosed with autism this year than with AIDS, diabetes, and cancer combined, the autism prevalence figures are growing, making autism the fastest-growing serious developmental disability in the U.S. And whereas 1 in 67 military families will have a child who's diagnosed with autism. And whereas autism is the fastest-growing serious developmental disability in the United States, costing the nation over $100 billion per year, a figure expected to double in the next decade. Despite these statistics, autism receives less than 5% of the research funding of many less prevalent childhood diseases, likely costing a family $60,000 per year on average. And whereas there is no medical detection or cure for autism, now therefore let it be known that the town of Simsbury joins with Autism Speaks in designating the month of April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month. To enhance the understanding of autism and to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support education programs and the funding of research programs to find a cure, the town of Simsbury will participate by placing a blue light at Ena Memorial Hall for the month of April. In witness thereof, I've placed my seal on the Great Seal of the Town of Simsbury dated the first day of April 2013.
Can you goodbye?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is that it?
That's it.
That's it. She is. Great job. And Shannon did a great job at the Capitol in recognizing the state ceremony as well. So, thank you for representing us and all families.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move now to First Selectman's report. I just wanted to report the item on the agenda tonight. The town of Simsbury has worked with the Hartford to create a public-private partnership on the sale of the Hartford. On tonight's agenda, the board will consider adoption of a public-private partnership with Hartford that's designed to ensure that the town has the opportunity to consider every possible option for the sale and the use of the Hartford property in Simsbury, and that our residents have an opportunity to participate in that conversation and that important process. Simsbury has been a leader in the Shiret process for land use planning, and in cooperation with the Hartford, we propose to commission a Shiret to identify the best possible uses for the Hartford's extensive property in Simsbury. That property consists of 172 acres and a 640,000-square-foot building. This tool will be available, this will be a valuable tool to make the Hartford's property more marketable to a broader group of buyers. It will also help us provide a wide range of options for that site. The cost of the Shiret is estimated to be about $175,000. The town has already earmarked $30,000 for consulting services, which will be leveraged by the Hartford's contribution of the remainder of all expenses. The proposed collaboration was recently considered and endorsed by the Hartford Land Use Study Committee, which this board established on the sale of the property. And I want to thank the members of that committee for their willingness to work on this project that's critical to the town's future. Just a moment, we'll hear more details about that process, and if approved, town staff will immediately begin the issuance of a request for proposals to hire consultants. The Hartford has been a valued corporate citizen, and we're very grateful to the company's commitment to participate in this plan that benefits both the Hartford and the town of Simsbury. We look forward to working on this collaboration. Finally, just wanted to remind the public that tomorrow night, Tuesday, the Board of Finance will hold public hearings on both the town of Simsbury's budget, the Board of Education budget, and the proposed capital improvement budgets. The hearings begin with the capital improvement projects at 7:30 in the amphitheater at the high school, and the hearing on the town budget and the board budgets will immediately follow the capital project hearing. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and town staff for their many, many hours spent in preparing both the capital budget and the recommended budget for this year. We've worked hard to propose a very conservative budget, which increases the town budget of 0.65%, with in addition to the pension plan bringing the total budget to 1.71%. I encourage the public to come out and speak on the budgets tomorrow night, and to stay involved in the important processes as we work to referendum, getting the budgets to referendum. So, thank you, everyone. We'll move now to action items. The first is to approve a master plan design for the Hartford property. I'll let the record reflect that Selectman Hevner has recused herself from this discussion. Thank you, Lisa. Hi, I'm going to call on you to just give a brief overview for the board, what the process would entail.
Sure. Very briefly, this is, as Mary said, a joint study between the Hartford and the town of Simsbury. We think that it's important, that it's a joint effort, and we presented it to the Hartford that way, and they willingly accepted that particular proposal. As Mary said, the property breaks down, it's about 172 acres, just a little over. Lot 1 is comprised of 99 acres. Lot 2 is 33 acres, that's where the main building is. And then, as you may know, there's a lot number 3, which is undeveloped land, 40 acres, just north of the existing Hartford site. That's a map. One end, the northern end of that parcel, that is the left end, is just slightly cut off. We couldn't fit the PDF all in one slide, but it's a large site, as you can see. It's a little bit exaggerated because of the way the slide comes out, but that's basically how it lays out. Current revenue to the town is 200 Hop Meadow Street, 638,000 square-foot building, so it's obviously quite large. Built in 1983, it's a four-story building. The bottom line is that the total tax on the real estate, and it's not the personal property, but tax on the real estate, is slightly over $1 million, $1,000,001. The plan is that the Hartford will take part in this study. They will let the town essentially run the study. There are many reasons to do this study. the town essentially run the study. There are many reasons to do this study. And when we present it to the Hartford, we're glad to see that they also agreed with the reasons to do this. We think that we can, by doing the study, significantly increase the value of the property for both the Hartford and the town. Reason that that's important is because we obviously all would benefit from doing this study. Number of potential users and buyers for the site would also be increased. We also think it's very important that the public understand what's going on at this particular time and have a part in the study as well. Local land use commissions would also be involved from the outset. Chronology is, and this is tentative, is that we would start in March. Actually, we started early March. And finally, at the bottom, you see, the plan would be presented in September of 2013. That means we work through the summer and compress a really long process, which took us a year last time, into a relatively few months. The reason that we think we can do this is because we've done it before. We have the pattern all essentially in-house. We know what to do. We know exactly what's involved. And getting the consultants to respond to the RFP very quickly, we think is very doable. There's some excellent consultants out there to be able to do this type of study right now. We have gotten pretty firm estimates from a number of places that the study will cost $175,000 for the entire Hartford study. Town portion of the study will be, as Mary said, about $30,000. Originally, we talked about the possibility of adding other sites for additional study and design. I don't think that's part of this proposal at this time, certainly. That would be additional money that's not part of this proposal. Outline of the study elements, we would cover all the detailed land use elements, graphic plans. We'd actually conduct the study so that we would end up with a code that would cover that site. And then ultimately be able to implement the site into the zoning regulations themselves. Just a few of the reasons why the study should be done and why the code work should be completed at this time. We really want to avoid the public perception that the Hartford is some sort of corporate fugitive, that they're leaving town and they don't care. They obviously express significant interest in participating in this study with us and creating public acceptance of not only their role as a corporate citizen, but what's going to go on that property in the future. We think that we can ease a transition to future uses and create a shovel-ready site essentially for a new developer by going through this process. I'm not sure that it's going to be easy process, but I think it'll be a thorough one, a diligent one. And we can come out with an excellent process, an excellent product for this community. That's basically it.
Thanks, Hiram.
Any questions?
I think it was mentioned earlier in public comments that, you know, there's, the town has no authority over the Hartford. And that's absolutely correct. We have done some research, and some other large buildings have been demolished, where rather than pay taxes, some business owners have just demolished. And there's nothing the town can do if this was the course that the Hartford chose to take. And I think it's a credit to the Hartford that when we worked with them, from the minute they announced that they were looking to sell off a portion of their business, that they were concerned about the town's partnership, and they were concerned about the impact that it had on the town, that they did have on the town. There's no question that this is a significant, will have a significant impact on the town. And as you can see from Hiram's slide, not only in terms of revenue, but in terms of the size and the scope of the building and the property that they own, anything that's done there will have a dramatic impact on the town. So, I think it's a credit to the Hartford that they are interested in, as Hiram said, coming up with a master plan to look at the site. There also, aside from this process, there would be no way for the public to be involved in that conversation. And I know Selectman Askam is on the Land Use Study Committee, and there was a lot of discussion about whether the town should participate, the pros and the cons. And I think it was raised during that meeting that this is a way to involve the public and have dialogue and let the public come in and tell the Hartford and tell the consultants what we would like to see come in and have some discussion about how that impacts revenue, traffic, and environmental impacts as well. So, it's unfortunate that we're not here celebrating expansion of the Hartford, but we're realistic and we're going to move forward and look at other opportunities for that site. So, Sean, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything before we open up for questions.
I mean, I think you summed it up very nicely, Mary. We obviously did have an extensive discussion. I mean, you know, as we discussed, the Hartford is a public entity that answers to their shareholders. So, this is a rare opportunity for a municipality, for a town like ours, to even have a seat at the table. They all, you know, again, there's no requirement for them to do this. So, the fact that we were able to have this discussion with them, and they're willing to let us be part of this process, I think is a win right off the start for us. Again, how long that opportunity will be there will yet to be seen. I hope that we'll be able to see this process through. And so far, you know, the Hartford has seemed to be very willing to have that for us. So, and again, as we discussed, and I know Mary was very focused, as I was, as well as the other commission members, make sure the public that had an opportunity. The last time we tried to develop something in that, and the town didn't go so well. So, we need to make sure that the public has a fair, you know, a fair seat at the table here to raise their concerns. Because it ultimately benefits not only the town, but the Hartford, because they can find out what this town really wants from a community, from a character, from a responsible land use study that we all talk about and we all hold, you know, very near to us. So, again, I think it's a rare opportunity. And Hiram, I'm going to steal your word, but it really is an opportunity here. We could grow this site responsibly, replace the potential taxes that we're losing. And we've got an undeveloped piece of land, so who knows what the opportunity is from a tax base there. Again, budgets have been extremely tight. Folks have asked us to do more from an economic development standpoint. And I think, I go, what? This is, that opportunity has arisen here. So, we're going to turn something bad into something good, hopefully. And I'm looking forward to seeing this process through, hearing from many folks. I think it's incumbent upon the five of us, obviously. I'm sure Lisa will get the word out any way she can as well, to, you know, to make sure folks participate in this process. It's going to go quickly. It's not meant for any other reason than it needs to go quickly, because they have a vested interest in selling this site. So, I think it's important that we have all hands on deck for this one. And I know that our team's ready for that. So, I appreciate the opportunity to help out.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions?
Do you have some questions? When, Hiram, you came at budget time for the request for this $30,000. It obviously had a different plan in mind. It wasn't specific for this. And I just wondered if you could speak to what those monies were originally going to be used for.
Actually, truth be known, Nancy, this is exactly what I had in mind.
You did? Okay, okay.
I've been thinking about it for, you know, a year, but I thought at budget time was time to sort of unveil it a little at a time. I couldn't really say too much, because we really hadn't talked to the Hartford yet. Didn't really know if they were going to agree to it. But when we did have that meeting, they were very welcoming, and that's really what it was for.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and my question, my reason for that question is I know you're doing an initial study of the 25, and a couple of folks have spoken to me about this, had just expressed some concern about the existing businesses. And certainly, they understand, and for all the reasons that are outlined, that this really is an opportunity, but that we want to continue the efforts that we're putting forward for the existing businesses to help them grow, because they themselves will be suffering as a result of a lot of folks sort of packing up their boxes and walking out of the Hartford store.
That's a really excellent point. And just to let the folks know, too, is that the consultant that's doing the marketing study, that $25,000 study, is, the first meeting has been set up with them. They're on board and ready to go. And they know that they have to be done by June 30th as well. So, the marketing study for the rest of the town and the businesses that are here now will be done by June 30th, you know, maybe July 1. But it's going to be June 30th is when the final bill comes. And the second thing is that the village district study, which will primarily focus on probably the Wheaton area, will be also done at the same time. The meeting, the first meeting with that consultant will also be April 18th, and that study will be kicked off at the same time. So-
So, you're going to be busy?
There's a lot going on.
My second question is around the idea of getting some grants possibly to offset some of those monies. I know you did an outstanding job when we went through the last charrette, getting things related to water diversion and some different things like that. And is there a potential for us to really maybe recapture some of the monies that the town would be putting towards us?
Yeah, we're looking for those grants as well. We're also in conversations. The town of Mansfield actually has a very similar process with University of Hartford, I mean, University of Connecticut, because there is, they're trying to develop a town center, and there's a public-private partnership. And we've been in touch with the town manager in Mansfield, Matt Hart, and they've received a lot of grants. And Hiram's had very detailed conversations about funding that they were able to get for their master plan. So, absolutely, we're looking, we're pretty good at finding grants.
Yes.
I also was listening very carefully early this evening when the state reps and the state senator said that they were interested in helping us out. So, I'm not sure exactly what that meant, but I'm sure we'll find out.
It's just the right time.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Shannon? I know both Mary and Sean mentioned the opportunity for public comment, but I didn't see it in your points up there. So, I just want to make sure that that is a-
Oh, absolutely. The whole charrette process is extremely transparent. And that's exactly the purpose, that we want everybody to be on board with this from day one. And matter of fact, and I haven't talked to the Hartford about this, I'd love to be able to have this set up at the Hartford, so that we can do the whole process right there. I mean, that's really the ideal location to be able to do it. So, if it can happen, that's great. But absolutely, the public will be involved in that.
Once the board approves, if the board approves this, then we'll work out the details. Obviously, this is very preliminary, the Hartford. We did, during the budget, allocate the funds for our own consultants to deal with the Hartford. And then, when we approached the Hartford, they were willing to leverage our initial budget to finish the project. So, we now have to flesh out the RFP, making sure that, and that's what Hiram will be working on, next steps. Good point. Other questions? We have a motion to approve.
I'll move that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Hiram.
Thanks.
Next item is approval of the tax refunds. We have a total of $604.40.
Yes.
Yes, I guess we can run our record. Any questions on the tax refunds? They've all been reviewed and recommended by the tax collector. I'm not giving a lot of money back out tonight, $604.
Yeah, I like when there's no comma.
That's right. No comma.
Thank you.
We are reviewing tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $604.40. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion to approve those refunds?
I'll move that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is to approve a contract between C-Tech Solar and the International Skating Center for installation of solar panels. Tonight, we're just being asked to endorse the concept and to direct town council to prepare language if we want to go forward. We've been approached by the International Skating Center to, they'd like to install a 324-kilowatt solar electric power generation system on the roof of the International Skating Center. We think that's a great idea, because it will save money and it'll be energy efficient, green. And it's a Simsbury business, so welcome to Miki Toro. And we always like to promote local businesses as well. So, we have the added benefit of a local business, employing a local business to have some cost savings. Bob DiCrescenzo is here tonight, because things are not always as easy as they appear. And while the proposal is a good one, we obviously have very complicated legal arrangement with the skating center. And I thought Bob could just walk you through the mechanics of what the board would have to consider in approving the solar panels. So, thanks, Bob.
Yes, thank you. What we did at your request is we compared the proposed contract against the ground lease. And the ground lease is very detailed on things like financing that's allowed on the building and also the ability to sublease portions of the building. And when we compared the contract to the ground lease, we determined that really what this requires to move forward is an amendment of the ground lease that specifically allows this type of activity. And I just met with Miki out in the hallway. We're going to get together on Wednesday and go through some of the technical issues. One of the issues is we're dealing with a form contract for a lot of projects. And some of the provisions that we're worried about may not be applicable to this particular installation. That's what we were talking about. So, we're going to go through all that. We will draft up a, if you saw requests, we'll draft up a lease amendment, which we should be able to bring back to you at your next meeting. And then, you can consider that as part of the project to go forward. The lease amend, the ground lease was drafted at a time when this sort of installation could not have been contemplated. And one of the issues is the initial term of the lease expires in, believe it or not, only six years from now. And now, I know every intention is to extend, but we need to protect against the very slight chance that the lessee will not extend. Those sorts of things we need to work out as part of the proposed amendment to the ground lease. But talking to Miki and learning more about this, this certainly seems like it will be a significant cost savings for the operation of the skating center, which is in everybody's interest, I guess. And we just need to have a ground lease amendment that accommodates it.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Any questions for the board? Since you're here, Miki, do you want to tell us a little bit about the amount of savings and what you're actually planning to do?
Yeah.
Come on up here.
Well, this is, this is a, a practice is being done all over the country, but it's called a PPA. It's a power purchase agreement. So, what happens is we are able to put about 324, 324,000 watts of power, solar power on the roof at zero cost to the building owner or the property owner. How we do that is a third party takes over the financing. They buy the system and rent it. They purchase it and rent it from the landowner or the building owner or the roof owner. So, many different ways it could be explained. And so, what we do, they get the benefits of the, some of the depreciation, some of the tax credits, and the CLMP ZRec contract that some of you may have heard of, which we already have attained and have in our possession. That's a 15-year contract. So, they, the owner of the system owns those rights. And then, they rent that power or sell that power to the landowner or the building owner at a discounted rate. So, currently, I think the Simsbury, get these numbers confused, because I look at them all day, but I think currently, they pay about 12 cents a kilowatt hour. And we're starting this one at eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour. So, if you do the math on 324,000 watts, it's actually 378,000 kilowatt hours, 378,000 kilowatt hours at the end of the day. It's a pretty significant savings right off the bat. And then, we, and then you take into account escalation and those types of things. And it's anywhere from a 25% to 35% savings in the first year. And it's, you know, it's a, the fact that it's paid for by somebody else is always nice. And the technology is very dependable and reliable. And this particular system is warranted through the life of the lease, all product. And we actually took an extended warranty out on the most complicated part of it. So, that's covered through the 20-year lease. Really very minimal exposure to the town or the building owner, in this case.
Great. And those ZRec credits are hard to get, so that-
Yeah, they only, it only happens once a year. And we applied for this last June. And as you may or not know, there's a ZRec auction every spring, summer. This year will be the second round of it. But in the first round, we applied for the skating center. It's a reverse auction, so you actually have to, you know, the lowest number wins. And we were able to attain one. Unfortunately, it started, the contract started January 31st. So, we're actually on the clock right now, and every day matters, every hour matters. But, you know, we're prepared to go through whatever steps it takes to get everybody comfortable with it. But it is a, time is of the essence. But, so the 15-year contract pays the system or the system owner about, in this case, about $52,000 a year for 15 years, to produce power and basically create it for RPS sake, for CLMP. They have requirements that are, they're obligated to buy a certain amount of renewable energy back from renewable energy sources. In this case, it would be the skating center. And they pay for it. We had to, you know, go through an extensive application, hopefully win it. In this case, we did. And now we have the contract in our hand, but we're just waiting for that approval.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that summary.
Sure.
Any questions in the board? I think at this point, if we could have a motion to direct council to prepare the necessary legal paperwork to approve the solar proposal. Make that motion. Second? The motion is to direct council to prepare the language, so it can come back to the board, Selectman, for-
For the ground lease.
Action. Yes. Lease amendment. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much, Miki. Thank you for being here. Next item is to approve the recommendation of the Performing Arts Center Board to host two concerts promoted by Premier Concerts. One would be June 22nd at, featuring Harry Connick Jr. And the second is July 16th, featuring Emmylou Harris and Rodney Crowell. So, welcome, Mr. Hensley, and thank you for bringing those proposals to us.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, I have, I have a few flyers here. Do you all have this already?
We do not.
I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
I don't have that one.
It's buried in the submission.
It is?
Yeah.
I don't have mine.
A couple pages into the submission.
Yeah, but mine, for some reason.
It's about halfway through the pile.
I don't know. Mine doesn't have it.
I don't have any.
You don't have any? You don't have any?
Yeah. Some of us didn't get it.
Sorry.
Does that mean we're not invited?
We have to pay extra.
Right.
Everybody.
Mary.
Of course, Mary.
Thank you. Is this yours?
First selectman didn't go. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, and actually, I've enjoyed the last, about an hour of the last hour and 15 minutes. Very interesting, I thought, and I thought John, I thought their report from the State Capitol was, that's just a sidebar conversation, but.
Thank you.
You know, I could have been miserable. I was not. So that's good. So as you know, we have been working very hard, Performing Arts Center Board has been working very hard. We have a great board, many of whom are here this evening, to try to develop relationships, both with promoters and with the Board of Selectmen, with the town, to make the Performing Arts Center all that it can be. Last year, we hired web management to do a, a full review, in essence, a mini charrette on the Performing Arts Center. And as a result of that, we have the shell document of, of a business plan that we're trying to follow as closely as possible. And at the same time we're doing this, as you know, from our board, the board that reports to you, there's also an independent board that was established several years ago. That's a 501(c)(3), and that board is working too. I'm not here to talk about that this evening unless you ask me about it, but I wanted to talk to you tonight about these two events, which are very important, and Tom Vincent has been working very hard. Part of the web management report was that they felt, of course, that the facility was underutilized and understaffed and a lot of the things that we've talked about before. But one of the things they suggested was that we try to develop a relationship with a promoter in the area to try to build continuity and trust, kind of what we're working on with you guys in the entertainment field, so that the Performing Arts Center, which is the second largest facility in the state, actually, capacity-wise, that it would be perceived by a promoter as an alternative for some of the events that could come down here, and that we've seen here, samplings of, over the last seven or eight years. So Tom's been working very closely with, to try to build that trust and build that relationship, and Premier Concerts and Keith Marler and the Bushnell, which works with Premier Concerts, have put together a program which has been labeled and, and will be press released as a summer concerts at Simsbury Meadows. This is a series of events, the two of which, which we're talking about this evening. And this is, and this is in addition to, and, and involved with the execution of the relationship that we have now, which is an incredibly important relationship with the Hartford Symphony. So the HSO, who also works with the Bushnell, and the Performing Arts Center Board have been interacting and talking about trying to do a lot of these things, and they've been very helpful with us in terms of the conversations. So I'm here this evening to, to ask for your approval of the concerts on Ju, June 22nd, which would be Harry Connick Jr. and his group, and he's promoting, he's on tour and will be promoting a new album that he has called Every Man Should Know. And then the July 16th event, which is Rodney Crowell and Emmylou Harris, and they too are promoting and on tour, promoting a new album called Old Yellow Moon. Both of these are very, very popular. In fact, I guess I would have to admit that I didn't realize how popular Harry Connick was until, till I started talking to my wife and other ladies.
Yeah.
About this event.
Very excited.
Realized immediately that it's, the place is going to be packed with women. But, but it's a very exciting, it's a very popular, very, very popular entertainer and performer. And so Emmylou Harris, who's toured with Dave Matthews and others, has got a, a great kind of new phase of her entertainment and music career, too. Both events are part of the summer concert series at Simsbury Meadows, which I mentioned to you, so we may be talking about more events there. I just want to give you a heads up. Both events are produced by the Bushnell and Premier Concerts. That will be in any press release that you would see. Both are going to be managed by, in terms of food and beverage, the Performing Arts Center Board will be managing and will be implementing all the food and beverage that's presented there. The setup for this, just not to answer questions before they happen, the setup of this will be theater-style, so there will be tickets sold through Ticketmaster, and there'll be assigned seating, and you can buy lawn seats, too. It is not a BYOB event, as you would expect when outside promoters are putting this on. The Simsbury Performing Arts Board will be doing all of that. And although we have received a zoning approval for the season, that's the way we presented our alcohol programs this year to the zoning commission, you know, I would like, at the same time we're doing this, if it's appropriate and possible, I'd like to go ahead and have your endorsement of it anyway. We've talked about that a little bit in the past. We're very excited about this. I, I think it's a great, it's two great performers that kind of very much match what we're kind of looking for in terms of events and promote, and promotions down there. You know, it kind of has to be a certain size and a certain genre, and it has to be a certain kind of performance. So these would be two great tests, and all we can hope for is that the 53% of good weather that is, happens in the summer, will, one of those 53% will be on both of these dates, and we'll pack them in. Just about the dates a little bit, the 16th, excuse me, the 22nd of June is the Saturday before the Hartford Symphony event, so much of the material and, and the erection set kit that we put up down there and the sound towers and all that stuff was already going to be in the process of move-in, although the symphony will not have, they will not have moved in yet, but that'll be in the process that weekend. And so this will be the weekend before, and the 16th of July is the Tuesday night between the fourth and fifth concert and the symphony. And we're working with the symphony to make sure that the logistics of moving their material, their, whatever maybe remain after they leave the stage, that it's secure and that they're comfortable with that. And I've talked to Kerry Hammond, the executive director and president of the Hartford Symphony several, I mean, almost every other day. But, so we, we're working with them, and Tom's working with them and Nick to make sure that we're secure down there and that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed for comfort. So I guess I would entertain any questions that we have. Very excited about this. These are just a copy of our press release that will be going out very, very soon. In fact, you'll, you're, you're going to hear about this very quickly if you.
On the way home.
Maybe, maybe on the way home. We'll just have to see, but.
Great. Well, congratulations. This is, this is great. This is a great fit. I think it's, you know, nice, nice concerts and nice series. Do you know what the tickets are, will sell for and when they become available?
You know, I, if you'll forgive me, I have heard numbers, but I would.
Nothing officially yet.
Prefer not to say because that's the promoter's deal. But Tom's here, if you, like, press me up against the wall or something.
No, just curious. And could we have the contract? So we would have to have.
Right. Everything would be worked.
Contingent on town council review.
Bob will be working on that. We have already, we, right. We do have, everything that we would do to prepare for anything that goes on down there has been done, and Bob will be working on the contract.
Great.
Almost immediately.
Great. And then the concession, the Board of Selectmen would have to approve this, the actual sale.
Because we're going to sell alcohol. Like, we did at September Fest.
And that was my question. Will you be following the same tips training?
Exactly the same.
Process that council will sign off on, just to make sure that.
Yep. Everything's the same as we've done it before.
Okay.
Fer Gensen will be, as, on behalf of the board, he's the vice chair of the board, knows all about that. It's, he knows, his background's in the restaurant and, and food business, so he knows all that.
So those same standards that we follow will be.
Same standards, same tip training, same everything.
Great.
In fact, many of the volunteers for that, that we have used in the past, we'll use again, just put them through the training.
Great. Questions?
First of all, I am one of the female fans of Harry Connick Jr.
I would, unsurprised.
So we're, we are thrilled, and this is also the weekend before graduation, so there'll be a lot of out-of-town families who might enjoy attending.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the question that I ask before everything we approve, is can you talk about what, if there's any additional risk to the town?
Oh, that really are, if any minimal risk because of the way the contract's written, and you have that there. So you know that we're getting a certain stipend, if you will, regardless of what happens. And then we participate, on each ticket sale, we're also, I mean, I can go into all. We're also going to be selling parking and so forth, all of which will go to the town. And we are going to, on the rev, the revenue side of things, on the food and beverage, we have a very attractive participation arrangement with the promoter.
See, you're comfortable we're not exposing the town to a huge risk.
I mean, I feel as comfortable as you can be in anything like this.
Right.
And I, I think our exposure is so minimal because of the way the contract's structured, and, and actually, I, to give credit where credit's due, I mean, between Tom Vincent and Keith Marler at Premier Concerts, they've been, from my observation, which is not within every second of every day, but just what I get feedback, it's been, they've been very, very supportive and helpful.
Great.
In fact, they asked us early, months ago, to reserve and hold dates which we approved and have held, these two of which are two of those dates, but we have held probably 15 or so different, 15 or 16 different dates, which are still, we're still holding, so that we don't overbook, don't double-book the facility. And this doesn't take away from anything else we're doing. In fact, we're, I, I would encourage on camera and every, and in the room, everyone to invite their friends and pack the Hartford Symphony concerts this summer. Kerry Hammond and her group had a great event last Wednesday evening. It was very well-attended, it was first class, it was a great kickoff, and, and they, they do such a great job. So I really want us to really support them, and we're really working hard to try to expand their footprint, too.
Thank you. And this information will be available, put on the website.
Oh, sure. Yeah. In fact, we're going to keep looking at the door. So, because like, there's a hand in my back moving my mouth. So, so we have.
It's theaters.
We have a lot of plans to put this on the website, to have links there with Ticketmaster. We would only be inhibited, to some degree or another, by whatever the capacity of this wonderful town is to help us with that. So.
Okay, so we have this camera-ready information that we put down.
A political announcement.
That's great. Okay. John?
Bob, I gotta say, having been to a number of your meetings, the, the level of detail and thought that you and the entire board has gone through to vet this, to make sure that the town is not exposed, that you abide by the same principles that we talked about last year, I think is, is outstanding. And I think yourself, along with Tom Vincent and the rest of the PAC board, really ought to be proud of yourselves. You know, this is a win, not only for the PAC board, but for the town. I think it's consistent with the web report that we heard about, you know, in terms of building the exposure, creating the momentum. I think you said, and I believe we talked about earlier, the Hartford Symphony has endorsed this. They're, they understand that it's happening.
They very much want us to be successful around them. The only thing, on their behalf, because I, I love them too, is because, the only concern they would have is just that we make sure that we take care of all their stuff.
Absolutely.
And that they don't incur extra expense. They want to help us be successful as we possibly can, so.
Absolutely. And that's, I mean, that's consistent with the web report as well, is the event that I, you know, we all, a number of us attended last week, was getting that footprint growing. You've been to damn near every town in the, in the area, talking to first selectmen, talking to town managers, getting the word out there, getting our, getting our message out there. So I think that's, that's fantastic, and appreciate your efforts.
My pleasure. So I guess I, that's, I would ask for your approval and also your endorsement of the thing.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve the concerts and approve the sale of alcohol?
I'll make that motion.
Here.
For Bob.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is to approve additional requests for using the Performing Arts Center, and that is.
Sure.
The River Run Road Race, April 28th, the Dog Park fundraiser, May 18th, Farmington Valley Trails Motion, June 1st, and the Valley Car Club, June 14th. Just a real quick question for Jerry. I know the PAC board had been reviewing their fee schedule, and do any of these, will any of these generate any additional fees?
The main thing was, with these, our concern was, at the very least, that the, these events cover our staffing costs, and, and each of them, and actually, they're, these are fairly, well, some are more than those, I shouldn't say minimal, but they have been advised that particularly the staff time that's involved, at the least, is what they would be billed for this year. They're all aware of that. As I said, they're all repeat events. They've used the site before. Nick Baccarella, who's our site supervisor, has worked with all these groups before, he's familiar with them, they're familiar with him. They know all the parameters, they know our rules, and, you know, so I don't think there's, there's an issue with any of these four events. And, and the PAC board is working really to get this, you know, really get their arms around this, you know, on, on the fees that we're charging the different groups and how we can be, you know, uniform and have a, you know, a fairly good system in place when a, when a group or organization comes in based on, you know, a number of factors that we.
So this, these groups do know what the fees are and have agreed to those fees?
I'm sorry?
They know what the fees they're going to be charged?
Basically, we've told them it's going to be man-hours, and it'll be the staff time involved.
But they have a sense.
They do. Oh, yeah, we've told them the limits, that it will be absolutely, I've talked with each one about that.
And I can tell you, based on the last discussions at the PAC board meeting, the PAC board is going to take up the fee issue at their, at the next.
Yeah, because I know.
It's on the next agenda.
I think what we, our goal was, is that we would publish the fee schedule on the website so that folks who want to use the facility will have a sense of what the cost was.
Right.
You know, to the extent that you can provide that to us.
I think ideally, that's where, where we want to be, and that's where I think we're working towards right now.
Great. Questions?
Make the motion to approve these events.
I'll second that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next item is to approve a boom mower attachment for the Simsbury Parks Department. Jerry's here this evening. We did budget for two pieces of equipment in this year's budget. We're pleased to say that when we went out to bid, we were able to utilize the state of Connecticut contracts, which brought in significant savings. And Jerry had indicated that he, because these funds were such great savings, he wanted to use those additional funds to purchase another piece of equipment. However, the, that was not specified specifically in the budget, so cannot be used for that. So we're, instead of returning the money to surplus and then having Jerry come and ask for an appropriation, he thought that he would ask the board directly if he could use the additional funds to purchase that piece of equipment. That's what he's asking for tonight.
Just a question. Does this need to go through the board of finance, or is this?
I believe it does. So we'll have to forward it to them. I'll double-check, but, yeah, because it's an appropriation of funds, but he would like to use the funds that he saved for that purpose. Questions for Jerry?
Okay, just, this was a item that we couldn't fund this year through CNR, is that, was that one of the items that was on our?
It was not, well, it was not a, a lower priority, because we have an alternative. We contract some of this work, and some of this work isn't done right now, and it's something that we've looked at, and, but we had other, more pressing issues. We're still behind with our vehicle, you know, purchases, we talked about during, you know, the budget hearing. So those are really our highest priorities, Nancy, and this was, you know, probably the next in line. And again, there are alternatives, although, you know, we think it's a cost-effective purchase because, you know, we won't have to be dealing with, you know, contracting these out. And honestly, there's going to be, I think, you know, the area that it's aimed at is really on the Greenway. There are a number of parks that we have roadways in that we really don't, we don't we don't keep open, and we don't really give it the attention it needs, and we want to try in some of these areas, particularly for safety, for people, you know, for people's, you know, well-being, and for, give them a sense of, you know, of safety in a lot of these areas. We'd like to keep them, you know, opened up a little bit more, so, as I say, there's an alternative, but I think this is a good, this, you know, is a cost-effective approach to what we're doing.
And to answer your question, Nancy, it was, we did not consider this, this wasn't brought to us.
Yeah.
During the process.
Okay.
And my other question really was around, what you mentioned, that's the savings, is there, you know, what is that amount? In other words, if you're not having to contract out for this anymore?
Well, we've tried to limit it, it's, the areas that we do are sometimes as much as $700, you know, per mowing, and as a result, we don't do it, you know, for budget reasons, we don't do it as much probably as we'd like to, and a lot of times, what we hear about, and Mary will hear, and others of you will hear, is that, you know, these are areas that need to be hit more often, and.
Particularly in the open space areas where there is, in residential neighborhoods, you know.
I was just gonna say, Owens Brook, one of the.
Owens Brook is one of the areas.
I'm sure you can imagine, just think of the calls that you've gotten, that's the area.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, you know, when Jerry approached me and said, do you like to come back to the board, because it was such a significant amount of savings, now might be the time to ask for that piece of equipment, and so he's here tonight to ask for that consideration. Other questions? Lisa?
I want to thank Jerry for your efforts in finding cost savings, that's, you know, we sometimes forget to thank staff, but that's very creative and aggressive, and we appreciate it. And the other thing that came up during budget considerations is how important it is for us to maintain the areas that we have, and this will go a long way towards helping you do that, so I will be supporting this motion.
Would you like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Next item is to accept a conservation easement for the Ellsworth subdivision. We've received a recommendation from the Planning Commission for a subdivision, four-lot subdivision on East Wheatog Street, so that the attached conservation easement may be filed on land records. Bob DiCrescenzo did review the conservation restriction, the documents. The property is on East Wheatog Street. I did have several meetings with the property owners who live nearby, and I know one resident, Sue Benardzik, and Mrs. Benardzik are here this evening, so thank you for being here. They've raised concerns about the drainage effect, the adverse effect on site drainage from the subdivision. I've had council review that concern. Planning Commission did not address it when it was raised, so I can't speak to, I can't speak to the board about how the Planning Commission addressed it, because it was not addressed in the Planning Commission. I did speak with Rich Switzke and asked him to also meet with our residents and to look it over, and Rich did report, there's a memo in your packet, that there is drainage issues associated with the existing property at 120 East Wheatog Street. He did suggest that the conservation easement be accepted with an amendment added to permit the House Number 120 driveway runoff to enter the easement area. That would allow some of the drainage issues that have been caused from that original house, the Number 120 East Wheatog is the original house. So, the problem is being caused by that original house problem, it's not being caused by the new subdivision. But Rich felt, in talking with counsel for the property owner who's here this evening, I believe, TJ Donahue, do you represent?
I'm here.
Okay, welcome, thank you. In conversations, Town Attorney, Rich Switzke, did have conversations with you, and the Ellsworths are comfortable with the change in the language of the easement to allow the runoff to enter the easement area, is that correct?
Yes.
Any questions? Maybe, Bob, you can just run through what the easement does?
Yes, it's, the reason it's in front of you is because it's an interest in land, and as a legislative body, you have to accept it. It's being dedicated by the subdivider, and to complete the transaction, so to speak, the legislative body must agree to accept it, and it's a conservation easement, not unlike typical conservation easement for a subdivision. We do require a title policy, and the amount of $30,000, which I understand has been provided, that ensures that the grantors are the actual grantors of the land when they grant it. It has, it was based off the town's form. I will need to review this amendment that's being discussed, but if you would, if you so choose, you could approve it, subject to my final review, prior to execution and recording. I'd like to see the plan, so I better understand what this drainage issue is all about, and I'd be happy to do that as soon as possible.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Any questions?
Just, Lisa? A quick question. It's my understanding that our acceptance of the conservation won't add to, it won't make us responsible for the drainage problem, that's just, that's a totally separate issue, is that correct?
Well, I want to look at the plans, and generally speaking, yes, you're an easement, you're an easement holder in the land, the property owner is still liable for the condition of that property. By accepting the easement, the easement simply says it's conservation easement.
That was my understanding as well, I just wanted to confirm that.
The intent of the recommendation from Town Engineer is that by accepting the conservation easement, it may not give the homeowner, the Ellsworths, permission to fix the drainage problem, so the language.
That is correct.
To allow the Ellsworth property owner to get on the site to address the drainage. If we accepted it the way it was presented, there would be a legal reason that the Ellsworths couldn't fix the drainage problem, because they wouldn't be able to use the conservation.
The property owner retains the right to maintain it, but to make the improvements necessary to fix the drainage problem probably would be precluded by the conservation easement, which has some very strict prohibitions against changing things like the contour of land and all of that.
And Council for the Ellsworths is comfortable with this arrangement as well?
Yes, we got the language, Rich recommended on Friday, and we've put it in the official draft. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll be here on Wednesday for other reasons, so I'll have an opportunity to look at the plans, and we'll make sure we wrap this up and resolve it.
Any questions? Can I have a motion to accept a conservation easement for the Ellsworth property with the added language?
With final review by Council?
With final review by Council, yeah. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I just suggest that property owner can't record it until I review it and sign off on it.
Right.
So, what he said.
And Maura, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. And our town clerk's here to know that you can't take anything until you say so. Great. I just want to thank, certainly thank the Ellsworths and Mr. Donahue for working with the town, certainly want to take, thank the residents for bringing this to our attention. While the conservation easement doesn't address the drainage, it was brought to our attention, and we certainly feel like it should be addressed, so this is.
Now's the time to do it.
Now's the time to do it, so we're grateful that we're able to incorporate that to this approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item is to approve use of Town Hall parking lot, April 27th, from 9:00 to 3:00, for State Representative John Hampton's, do I have to say it? Johnny's Junk Jamboree.
I did actually want to hear you say it.
When I read the agenda.
I think we skipped one.
Yeah, I think we skipped one.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Well, let's hold off on Johnny's Junk Jamboree.
Ouch, she gets to say it again.
I get to say it again. The next item is acceptance of the Public Building Committee report on a proposed senior center. I want to thank the Public Building Committee for their hard work on this recommendation. My suggestion is tonight, we just accept the report, so it becomes public, so the public will have access to the copies, we'll have copies on file at Town Hall and the library and other places for folks to look at. We'll then set a date to put this on for public hearing in May, so folks can comment, and then we'll be able to take any necessary action in time for any further steps that the board wants. Does that timeframe work for the board?
Yeah. Can we get this online as well?
Yes, well, it's big, but we can try to, try to figure out the way to do it without crashing the system.
Right.
I did want to say that at this board's request, I did ask the Performing Arts Board to review the recommendation as to whether the Performing Arts Board recommends that site be looked at, and I've not gotten a report back, and I know, Sean, you are working with them.
I believe that's on their next agenda as well.
Yes, to get this on.
We raised this at their most, they met Friday morning, obviously, did two concerts, where the pressing issue, and it was a special meeting, so they couldn't have made the agenda.
Right, so we have nothing to report from them, but we did ask that they put on their agenda and provide us some feedback, and as soon as we get that, we'll report that back to the board.
Absolutely.
So, if I can just have a motion to accept the Public Building Committee's report on the proposed senior center?
I will accept that.
Make a motion to accept that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item is to approve the use of the parking lot on April 27th. I can't say it anymore. For use by State Representative John Hamp.
One question, what's it called? I'll make the motion to approve the use of the parking lot.
Thank you. For what, Sean?
Johnny's Junk Jamboree.
I'm gonna second the motion for Johnny's Junk Jamboree.
Go. Any questions on the junk jamboree? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item is to approve an advisor for implementation of defined contribution plans and oversight of defined contribution plan in 457 funds. I want to thank Tom Cook for sending out the RFPs, we had a number of excellent proposals, but we do have a recommendation here tonight to retain fiduciary investment advisors, subject to approval by Town. Do you want to add anything, Tom, to that?
I'm happy to answer questions, it's fairly straightforward, but what's wrong with the site, I sound like you have the funds that you're making available, which needs to be set up, and the initial piece of this RFP is to make sure that we're ready to hit the ground running with an actual defined contribution plan in July 1st.
And just for the record, we did receive 12 proposals, and this was the lowest bid that we received.
That's correct, yeah, and FIA, as you probably all know, is the organization that's working with us on pension plans in the OPEC, so they're very good to work with, and they understand quite intimately how we work.
I was just gonna say, I think that's fantastic, from a consistency perspective, to be able to have those votes, yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I have a quick question. Did we budget for this?
Yes, it comes out of the.
And not only that, we'll be splitting the funds with the Board of Education, so the initial is a.
Just want to make sure, because every $7,500 bucks counts.
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry, do we have a motion? No.
We do now, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, the motion carries. My next item is to approve a resolution to execute and deliver a contract with the Connecticut State Library for 4,000 Historic Documents Preservation Grant. Thank you, Carolyn, for getting this grant. I think there was a question about whether this grant is similar for the, to the 2,500 that was put in the budget, I think it was Shan's question, that we appropriated in the budget for preserving documents, and Carolyn, maybe you just want to explain what each of these programs are for.
The monies that were put reinstated into the budget were, that's an ongoing program that we have carried out year to year, and that's basically to restore the current records that we have, 1700s, 1800s, whether they're land records or birth, death, and marriage records or whatever. So, that's an ongoing operating expense. This grant will be for a project, it's a one-time project. Once it's, they do the, complete the project, then we're not going to go back to that, it's going to be done, and it's, so, does that help you to, okay?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify the difference between what we talked about.
Right, right, yes, yeah. Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Quick one on my part, just, I noticed on the last page attachment, the 16,000 matched contributions coming out of the Town Clark Fund.
Right.
Coming out of the budgetary process.
Correct. That's a surcharge that the town collects for land record recordings.
Absolutely.
Yes.
With that, I'll make the motion to accept the.
Do you want to read the resolution?
Sure. I was walking into that one.
It's not a long one, Sean.
I finally volunteered for one.
It's tiny.
Absolved that Mary A. Glassman, First Selectman, is empowered to execute and deliver in name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an Historic Documents Preservation Grant.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Two quick announcements. One is, we are now looking for Hometown Heroes. If you know of a Hometown Hero who has made a difference in the quality of life in Simsbury, we are accepting nominations until 4:30 on April 22nd, so please let us know who those are. The next item is to congratulate the Simsbury High School varsity boys' basketball team. I just want to thank our resident, Herb Newhauser, he was so excited and enjoyed the Simsbury High School varsity boys' basketball team so much, he asked us to publicly congratulate them as well, and we've had a number of wonderful teams at the high school that have had great seasons, so we'll just add our congratulations to all of them, and thank Herb for bringing attention to the high school varsity boys' basketball team. Next item, under appointments and resignations, at this point, if the board would consider amending the agenda to take up two resignations, these items were originally scheduled, these resignations were originally scheduled to be on the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, but because of the cancellation for the holiday, we did not have that meeting. So, we have two resignations of Gina Catterett and Terry Bolton from the Tourism Committee, that will make room for the appointment to the Tourism Committee. If we can have first, a motion to amend the agenda to take up that item.
I moved, amend the agenda, to consider these items.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, if we could have a motion to approve the resignations.
I'll make that motion.
Second. For the record, the resignations are for Gina Catterett and Terry Bolton to accept those resignations as members of the Tourism Committee with our thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries. Now, we'll move back to the agenda, where we're asked to approve the appointment of Oliver Dickens to the Housing Authority for a term of five years. I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With our thanks. Next is to approve the appointment of Angela Campani to the Tourism Committee with our thanks. And motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, is there a tie?
Mm-hmm. Did I hear? Tie goes to Maura.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is approve the regular meeting minutes for February 25th. Then we have a motion to approve.
What's that?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any corrections, changes?
Lisa?
I did not on that. All in favor?
I, I, sorry, I do.
Okay, you'll have to move faster, go ahead.
So, sorry. I expected Lisa to go first, so I didn't pull it in. So, we're on page 1, 2, 3, 4, under item D, on the fourth line, will not lose money. This will not loose money.
Loose money.
Loose money.
Loose money.
That was all I had on that.
Thank you. All in favor with that change? Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the Budget Workshop Special Meeting Minutes for February 26th.
What's that?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Change just.
The meeting minutes are duplicate to the 28th, and they should reflect our covering the WPCA, CIP, and CNR, so you may have to table approval of those.
Yes.
Let me see.
Yeah, the ones on our packet are identical copies.
Yeah, so we have the wrong copy, yeah.
I do have corrections that maybe could be made in advance before they're given to us.
Well, that, there's actually a, the 28th does have those.
To make the corrections.
To the 28th, that's okay, yeah.
The 28th is the correct meeting for these minutes.
Correct. Well, why don't we table the 26th? Table the 26th.
Withdraw. Move to table.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second. If you withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
And then, that's great. And the motion, and who's second?
Second.
All in favor to table?
Aye.
The next item is 28th minute, so why don't we move on those?
I'll move those.
Corrections? Nancy, move those. Changes? I'm sorry. Just for the record, Nancy moved them. Do we have a second?
Second.
Maura, we'll give it to her. We have a motion, we have a second.
This is getting bad. Corrections?
Yes.
All right. Go, Lisa.
Ed Lamontaine is spelled wrong. I gave the correction to Kathy.
Thank you.
Ms. Nielsen of Main Street spoke about the pin show. It's spelled wrong as well.
Right, thank you.
On the last paragraph, Ms. Lacorzbeck is also asking for dialer rights. Patients be asked to pay 25 annual donation. I think that should be participants.
Yeah.
On the next page, first sentence, a period after the word veterans before the word Under land use and economic development, 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph, I wasn't sure what was meant by this. He does feel the administrative assistance for the assistant is really needed. That may be correct, I'm not sure, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's not O'Connor. It's Allison, so that needs to be changed.
Yeah. I'll come in and text you.
Okay, we'll have to go back, and I think, I think he meant, he feels that administrative assistance is really needed.
Okay. That makes sense. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay, and on the next page, 1, 2, the third paragraph just needs a period after the word budget, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
I had a couple. Back on page 1 in the call to order, and under public audience in the fourth paragraph, Sarah Nielsen's name is-
I missed that.
S E N, not S O N.
Thank you.
And on-
And we'll add her first name.
Yes. On page 3, the last three paragraphs that precede possible action slash discussion, Chief Ingverson, I N G V E R.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you. With those changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. March 11th minutes.
We have a second.
Second. Corrections, changes?
I have none. I have none on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special workshop, March 12th.
We have a second.
Corrections, changes?
I have one on the page 8, second paragraph, the last line, reducing the North Central Conservation donation by 14,000. That was the, or 1,400, I'm sorry. That would, that would have been nice if it was 14,000, wouldn't it? That was the dues that Hiram had-
Oh, 1,400.
1,400.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Instead of 400.
Right, yeah.
Any other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
March 14th? We have a lot of meetings.
Shoot.
Wow. Do we have a second?
Second.
Maura got that one. Any corrections, changes? On, under 4 on the first page, in that main paragraph, third line up the pin show.
Yes. Yep, with a T.
For 3.
T for 3.
Any other corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Final Budget Workshop for March 19th. We have a motion. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Corrections or changes? Done. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The A's on Subcommittee Reports? Personnel Report?
I have a few.
Anybody have public safety?
Board of Ed?
I have, yeah.
Lisa? An intro.
I just wanted to say that Technology Committee sent out a press release asking for members, and they received a number of people who were interested, and it's a very impressive group, and they're going to be contacted to participate in, and so thanks to all who applied, it's great. Some of the things that Technology Task Force will look at, and these are some of which were developed by the Personnel Subcommittee and some by town staff, by First Selectman's Office, and by this board in our budget discussions, were website review, emergency response capabilities, security, communication, technology needs for essential services, social media use and policies, thin cloud evaluations, GIS needs, training, constituent requests, and order tracking, online services, personnel considerations, and townwide calendar. Staff from Mary's office has indicated that the website review is their top priority, and they'll reprioritize the other issues as things go forward, but they'll take a look at the website and make sure it's user-friendly, and that people can navigate it, and look at the capabilities, because there may be things we want to do that we can't do.
Thank you, Lisa. And now that the, the deadline to apply, to volunteer is closed, we'll provide the board with the residents who've volunteered. Agreed.
And then I have just a couple of quick ones. The Healthy Mouth presentation from two dental students at the University of Connecticut that I mentioned a while ago has been rescheduled, and that will be on Wednesday, May 15th at 2:00. They will discuss oral hygiene as critical to overall health but often overlooked, and they will discuss also nutrition, denture care, hygiene tips and tricks, and ways to make this easier for people who are lacking in dexterity or have arthritis. And there will be dessert served because it's done by Dennis. And some giveaways.
Free toothbrushes.
Yeah, toothbrushes, and there will be a limited number of electrot toothbrushes that will be available as well. I also wanted to announce that Senior Citizen Art Night has been scheduled. That will be Tuesday, May 28th, with a dinner at 5:00 and an art tour at 6:00, and people can sign up at the senior center. I wanted to thank the Farmington Valley Jewish Congregation for organizing the Holocaust Remembrance Day that they held on Sunday, where for the whole hours of the day outside of Eno, they read the names of some of those who perished during the Holocaust. It's a very moving thing. People come and speak the names every 15 minutes, and I was able to participate, and so was John Hampton and many, many members of our community, and it was just a lovely opportunity. I do have a report on Aquarium, but I'll wait till the end, because Mary and Maura, I think you guys are recused from that, right?
Yes. Okay. Sean?
Just a quick one on public safety. We were notified that the state intends to once again exercise us this summer from a disaster readiness standpoint, so there'll be more details, and I'm sure the board will be able to participate if folks would like to, but I know Kevin Quals, he's working on the details, and he's going to get a report back to the next public safety meeting on that matter. So we're looking forward to exercising yet again.
Yes. Practice makes perfect.
We're pretty good at it around here, so.
Other? Yes. I just wanted to thank, you know, Saturday, we were at the Terriffill Potluck, and Shanann and Lisa were there, and Sean and I stayed and ate some good eats, and they gave their report and presented their new officers, which they asked for nominations from the floor, but nobody seemed to jump up, so they've got another great round of a couple of years out of the folks that they nominated that night. And on Sunday, we were at the Squadron Line Playground Fundraiser. Sean and I went without kids. Shanann was here with her son. But I just wanted, I told them I would give them a shout out. They raised $11,500, but they have a pretty big nut, you know, to get the playground going, and so they're working right now and trying to figure out ways that they can take what wasn't raffled off or, or bid on and make that available. They put a lot of effort into collecting all those gifts, and also then we'll be reaching out to the business community to raise some money that way, and looking for in-kind donations as well. So I encourage them to keep us informed on what's going on, so we can help them raise some cash.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? Shanann?
Shanann? Hi. Just to echo what Nancy was saying, I think that the Squadron Line Fundraiser on Sunday was so well organized, and they worked so hard, and it was really a community effort, so it was, it was nice to see so many people supporting that effort from a bunch of different venues. Quickly, just a reminder from the Tourism Committee that the Volunteer Expo is taking place on April 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Eno Hall, and I believe at last report, they were, they had filled all their tables.
Great, oh, good.
So they're very excited about that, and it's a great way for people to get involved in the community. And then finally, the Women's Forum that I've been working on with the Junior Women's Club is all set for May 4th from 8:30 to 11:30. We have three speakers from Simsbury, which I'm really excited about, three women who are talking about a couple of different things, but the general theme of the day is today's woman managing it all. So we'll talk about self-care, how to manage different phases of our life, of our lives, and relationship building amongst women. So I'm really excited about that, and hope you all will attend.
Great, thank you. Is that the last report that you have?
Other than Aquarium?
Other than Aquarium. Okay, so I'll ask Lisa to take the chair, report out on Aquarium. I'll let the record reflect that I am recused from that item as a Selectman wore timer, and I'd like Lisa to handle that item, so thank you.
And then I'll adjourn the meeting.
That's the last item. Thank you.
You're done. Unless you want to come back for the adjournment.
I didn't want to presume.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Get a mess.
Sorry.
Take your time.
Take your time.
Let me get that chair for you.
Oh, geez.
Empty.
Have a good night.
Good night, Maura.
I just wanted to report out that I think members of this board have received copies of the letter, but for the public, we received two responses. First, to Mr. Cook's letter from Charles Furriott, President and Chief Executive Officer of Aquarium. He indicated that the complete application will be filed with PURA during the week of March 25th, but I confirm with Mr. Cook that we have not yet received notification of that happening, and I didn't see it on their website either. They indicated that the average water bill for a Simsbury resident who uses 18,000 gallons of water is approximately $83 per quarter. The rate request would increase this by about $14 per quarter, which I think is, Sean, you want to do the math?
They claim it's 16%, but I think they're applying their standard filed rate base.
Right.
They didn't answer the crux of the question, which was, what is the actual impact of the Simsbury?
What would be 56 if their estimates are correct? $56 a year. And they indicated that the Simsbury's rate increase would be similar to the average of 16.8%. So not, they are not anticipating that Simsbury's rate increase will be more, although in the past, you know, I think last time this happened, Simsbury's rate increase has been more. We received a second letter from Arthur House, the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, that as of March 26th, no application had been filed, but only the 60-day notice of intent. Mr. House indicated that our letter would be made part of the public record. So at this point, I don't think there's any action that staff is recommending that we take. There's, nothing's been filed. We'll follow this, and once-
PURA's certified something.
Let the board know that this, what we've already done will be included in the record. Does anyone have any suggestions or action they want us to take in advance of that?
No, I think we need more information from them. Until we get it, there's not much we can do, so.
That's right. Okay. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.